And thank you for joining us. I am Allison Lewis, better known as Al Lewis. I am running to be your next Lakeland City Commissioner for Southwest District C. On tonight, I have gathered some of our community business owners. Welcome again to the Plugged In Plugged In panel. I've gathered some of these wonderful people here on tonight to discuss their experiences and the challenges that they face as small business owners. This will be a progressive and candid conversation that covers all aspects of business that in their walk as a business owner. A large part of my campaign's mission is to listen and connect all people, not just a certain group, but all people to resources and opportunities to for here in the city of Lakeland. Again, I thank you for joining me. Please, I urge you to listen, take notes, and please feel free to leave your comments in the comment section as we kick off on tonight. Again, I will kick it off to Ms. Camia Hayes to introduce herself, and then we will do a ping pong. But again, please, take notes, relax, breathe, and get ready to learn. Thank you for joining us. Ms. Hayes?
I'm Camia Hayes, mindset coach, and I help women, mainly kingdom women, go from feeling unfulfilled to living a life of fulfillment and ultimate confidence.
Awesome. Ms. Crumbly?
Hi, I'm Dorcas Crumbly, and I am the owner of Essential Catering Solutions right here in Lakeland, Florida. We are a custom caterer and events concierge that serves everyone, and we do events as well. So we also contract and work with various other businesses, as well as foodies, to provide a personalized event experience.
Awesome. Mr. Coach Tumer?
I'm Corey Tumer, the owner of Four Life Promotions and the C made mentors and five oh three, five oh one C three nonprofit organization.
And last but never least, and I must give him a personal shout out for allowing us to use his studio on tonight, Mr. Titus Moy.
Hi, everybody. My name is Titus Moy, and I am the owner of TGM Studios, a photography studio specializing in portraits, corporate photography, and autograph photography you could think of. And we are located off of South Florida Avenue.
We have introduced our wonderful, wonderful panelists, so we're gonna dive right in. So I'm just gonna kick off the question, and whoever ping pong, remember as I told them that this is a couch conversation. When it comes to business, we all have that why. And so I just wanna ask you all, why did you all start your businesses? What made you say now is the time that I need to start the business?
Well, I can go first if y'all don't mind. Um, so when I first started doing photography, um, I started doing this business because when I was graduated from high school, you know, my mom, she wasn't able to afford getting me senior senior photos. So I decided to just make that initiative to be able to offer affordable photography to other people that might not be able to afford good photos and, yeah. So that's how I got started.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Ms. Crumbly?
Um, I actually started my business more, more, more off of a suggestion from my husband after I graduated from getting my master's degree. I was applying for C-suite positions and high-level positions at corporate offices and companies, and it was just going slow. And I was restless, and I wanted to put my education to good use. I wanted to put all of my past experiences to good use, and I just didn't know really how to do that. So he suggested, he said, why don't you just take a break from that? And try something you like to do and, you know, see if it becomes something, you know, business-worthy. Uh, just try it for years, see if it works, and if it doesn't, you know, you can always go back and look for more jobs later. Um, so we came down to talking about what I like to do or what, how I like to be around people and see people enjoying themselves and the experience I had with people and serving people and cooking food, and everybody liked to come to my house to hang out and eat. Um, so we got food out of that. I didn't wanna start a restaurant because I knew that's a huge undertaking with a lot of capital needed to start.
Talk about it.
So catering became what I decided to do, and I love it.
Awesome, awesome. I, I know I've had some, some experience in a restaurant myself, so when you speak about that capital, trust me, I know, which is why I'm no longer in that business. Ms. Hayes, tell us your why.
So for me, um, I started out as a makeup artist, and, um, it's always been about women's empowerment for me. And so when I started doing makeup, I found that the ladies that came in my chair, they wanted more. So they came in my chair, you know, thinking, oh, I'm gonna just get this transformation um, as far as the physical, but when they left, they left like, you know, with a weight. It felt like a weight was lifted. And so I transitioned from makeup artistry to mindset coaching. And the reason why I did that is because a lot of times as women, we focus on so many things, like we focus so much on the outside, and a lot of times we're masking things, right? We, we try to be cute, you know, everything gotta be put together, but really our insides are, there's holes. And so I transitioned from makeup artistry to mindset coaching because when you feel beautiful on the inside, when you work on your inner beauty, then that's when everything else falls in line. Cause you can't have one without the other. You can't be, you know, dressed to impress and looking nice, but you are raggedy and tore up on the inside because that's what you're gonna attract. And so we're working on that, that inside-out instead of the outside-in.
Awesome. Now, that is good. That is a good one. Mr. Tumer?
Uh, well, I play at Cap Alpha Site Return Incorporated. Um, and we were invited to our first step competition at the Florida Classic. And well, a good friend of mine who was a little bit older than me was already in the promotion business. And I had the opportunity to witness twenty thousand people attend that step show.
Wow.
And it kinda just gave me the spark of this is something I wanna do. And from there, I kinda, um, asked him to mentor me. When I graduated, the first thing I wanted to do was put on a step show. And first step show was successful. And it's been all and go from there.
All and go from there. Awesome. So I, I, you know, we understand that the city of Lakeland is growing by leaps and bounds, right? And so why did you all choose to stay in this city to have to have your business, to grow your, well, you're continuing, you're growing your business every day that you work in, and in my belief. But what made you say, I'm gonna stick here in Lakeland and grow my business here, and this is where we're going to be? Because I believe the majority of us, I know you're from Mount Dora, but we're from Plant City, correct? You're Plant City, and I know we're Lakeland, correct? Um, born and raised in Lakeland, Florida. And so what, what made you all say Lakeland is the place that I want to start my business?
Well, I'll start first on that. For me, um, I didn't wanna go back home. I had no interest in going back home. And I also teach school. I've been a teacher for twenty plus years.
Awesome.
And, um, I wanted to make Lakeland my home because of getting my first job here. So with that, along with the, um, the success of my first event, it kinda made me say this is where I wanna build a foundation.
Ms. Hayes, you have anything?
Well, my, I work, I can work from anywhere. And so I don't just have clients in Lakeland, like I have, you know, global clients. We going international in the name of Jesus, okay? But, but no, I don't just have clients in Lakeland. For me, um, Lakeland is home. I've stayed in Lakeland because this is where my family is, this is where my parents are. Um, and I mean, it's just home. This is what I know. But as far as business-wise, um, my business, because I can work from anywhere, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter where I live.
Gotcha. Titus?
Um, I mean, I started doing photography in Lakeland once I graduated from high school. So I mean, it's just always been something for me to do business here. But Lakeland, believe it or not, it has a lot of supportive people here. And you know, I know a lot of people say that Lakeland doesn't have a lot of support, but I mean, I've gotten so much support, so I mean, that's my personal reason is the support is here.
Gotcha. Ms. Crumbly?
Um, I originally wasn't trying to stay in Lakeland. I was probably a part of a, a large group of people that go to school here or go to school elsewhere and don't come back or don't stay and reside in Lakeland to, um, raise a family and, you know, start a business. Uh, but I was still here, yet, you know, I was still here four, four years ago. And, um, I went to school here, and my kids are established here, my mom established here. And so it was easier to just start the business where I knew the most um, about where I was located. I know this city, I know the ins and outs of this city. I know a lot of people, and I figured that it was best to utilize the resources, um, the networking, the relationships that I had already built over time just being here as, um, a resident of this city, um, to start my business here. And I feel that the city has grown, like you said, um, by leaps and bounds, and it has become more progressive and forward-thinking in its mindset to support small businesses and the starting of small businesses um, more than I ever thought it would do. I would say twelve, fifteen years ago, I would not have seen myself starting a company here in this town and being successful at it. Um, I didn't feel that it was friendly to, um, certain cultures even um, to start successful businesses and really get out there and really, um, do well. So I think that's a credit to the city and the people in it who are working to make it a city for all.
Got you. Absolutely. And I loved how you talked about relationships, and that's something that I want to discuss. Relation, the importance of relationships and networking while in business of your own or in business in general. Somebody, would you just talk about that, relationships and networking? I know prior to, um, us filming, you, you mentioned, you made a powerful statement about relationships. If you can discuss relationships with us, uh, but whoever wants to ping pong about it?
I, I firmly believe that, um, relationships are key to, um, growing, growing, um, whether it's within, um, or exponentially and around you. I feel that relationships are built, um, based on commonalities um, and based on things that you can identify with. Uh, but those grow as your life experiences grow. And as you grow older and you experience so many different things, um, you can build relationships, um, in different places. And not every relationship should have the same timestamp on it or, you know, should serve the same purposes. But collectively, relationships can enable you to do so much more with your life if you're willing to, um, sort of nurture them. And, um, I believe that good relationships go a long way. And building those relationships cause you, I mean, require you to put some work in. You put in what you get out, and, um, being kind, just being kind to people can get you a lot.
And I, and I think also with relationships and all of what we all do, it's, um, the thing called building trust. And when you're running a business, um, people wanna trust what you're doing. You know, they wanna be able to go to you about things compared to having to discuss something with somebody else. So when you build relationships, you wanna be hands-on with everybody you know and not pushing them off to be secondary. And I know in my field of business, that's probably one of the most important things of why I feel that we are so successful, because like we build those relationships. For example, if you're at one of my events, um, I'm not the promoter that is onstage popping bottles and enjoying the party with you. I'm working for you. So if you need something, I'm servicing you. If you, if you have an issue, you're calling me, I'm coming to you. I'm not sending just security. You're gonna, where's, where's Tumer at? Uh, you're texting me, you're, hey, I got a situation at my table, I'm coming. So it's very important to build relationships because it's, everything's about trust and business.
Absolutely.
I think even with relationships, like when we think about, um, connection, like it's very important not only to build relationships with people in business, but also like just the people who you are around, period, matters, right? You know, like, because thank God, like I'm blessed with people where I have couch conversations like on a regular. Like we just sit around and talk about the things that we were talking about before the camera started rolling. Those are conversations, you know, that we have just on a regular because I'm connected to other business owners. And I think a lot of times, like we just friends, right? And so we just talk about life and business or whatever. And I think where we miss out when it comes to relationship in, you know, networking as far as business is, is too many takers. If, if you, if you're going to network, like you need to be able to give something as well as take. And I think that's why networking hasn't been as effective, um, in Lakeland, you know, since we're talking about Lakeland, right? So I think that's why networking hasn't been as effective because everybody comes to take and nobody wants to give. It has to be a give and take. If you don't have anything to bring to the table and all you're doing is taking, then you might need to invest in a coach. You might need to invest in a course or something that'll help you so that you can grow. Because if you have the taker mentality, if, if you have the free mentality, then that's what you're gonna attract, right? So I'm gonna attract people that just wanna take, take, take and never want to actually give.
Absolutely.
And with networking, you gotta have an open ear.
Yes.
Like everybody can't know everything. You know what I'm saying? Like we were sitting talking earlier and like I was kinda giving points to everybody. It was like, oh, I didn't, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. But after I told y'all, I'm, I'm excited about being here because I wanna learn from you guys as well because you all do different things, you know what I'm saying? So you can't be someone that knows everything. And I think that's kinda where the failure begins with networking here in Lakeland. Everybody knows everything is wrong, but they're not willing to share what's right. They wanna keep that to themselves.
I'd like to piggyback on what both of them said, um, with the relationships. When it comes to me personally, um, I seek out, like you were saying, look for, for someone. And I look for someone who is doing better than me in the area that I'm doing. And, um, I have called up caterers, you know, that are doing good business and big business, um, both in this vicinity of, of this town and outside. I, I looked all around this country. I've looked all over the world at different catering companies because I don't want to just have this feel of just local. I'm only gonna, you know, serve these, so these few people and, you know, I'm gonna stay small. When you have a big mindset or you want, you wanna go somewhere big, um, you have to go after that. And, and I call and I make relationships happen. I call them, I say, hey, you know, I've followed you, I've seen you. I don't know how to do this, you know? Would you mind, you know, just giving me a couple of answers? I have some specific answers. Um, and you can feel people out. Some people will be like so, um, taken aback by that that they're kinda like, oh, wow, you know, because people don't do that on a regular basis. Um, but if you show yourself friendly and you are genuine, most of the time, you won't have a problem. Most of the time, people are willing to help. And a lot of times people are willing to help, and most people just don't know that there are people that are willing to help out there.
Got you. What about for you, Titus? You do very well with relationships.
Yeah, and I kinda keep that in mind too, you know, how you treat people. It definitely benefits in the long run. Um, I feel like relationships are important because when you're running a business, it's all about word of mouth, I wanna say. And that word of mouth will either make you, break you. It'll either take your career further or humble you and take your career all the way down. So how you treat people for one is very important, but also just, just like how you are just in general is just important. So I feel like word of mouth and it's just the key factor when it comes to relationships because it'll help you just keep increasing and just going further and further.
And even with networking, the word of mouth is important because, again, like you don't wanna sit there and I wanna say everybody thinks they know everything because if we're sitting around and we have this experience around someone where you say, man, I couldn't get nothing out of that person that was beneficial. Somebody asks you, well, how was it to sit down with, with Tumer? Uh, he think he knows everything, and that just travels like, oh, I don't think that's somebody you wanna work with because they know it all. So you gotta always think about it.
Absolutely. I think it's also imperative. My aunt gave me this advice when I was in college. Uh, she served her time in the military. She said, Allison, let me just share this with you. And I didn't know why she was sharing it, but now I do. She said, Allison, when I was an E-five, I didn't hang around the E-fives. I hung around the E-sixes and the E-sevens. She said, Allison, when I became an E-six, I didn't hang around the E-sixes. I hung around the E-sevens and the E-eights. And my reply was, well, why did you do that? She said, because an E-five can't tell you how to get to an E-six. And then I saw myself, as I matriculate in this life and I still do it, I hang, when I went to law school, I didn't hang around law students. I hung around lawyers. Now that I'm an educator, I don't hang around the one-year teachers. I hang around the twenty-plus-year teachers. Because again, that's going to help you leap forward. And I think that mentorship is highly imperative. But you have to find yourself, as you all talked about, being friendly. Find, find yourself a friendly person. You have to be willing to be coached. You have to be willing to be mentored because nobody wants to mentor somebody who know everything. My goodness gracious. If you know everything, why you gonna waste my time? And so, yes, seek good mentorship in business. Seek good mentorship. That's what I think, you know? Uh, so anyways, another question for you all. Um, when you all opened up your business, did, did you all look, uh, look to the city for local resources for assistance to help you? Why, why not?
Well, I wanna say when I just opened up this studio, I personally didn't because I, to be honest, I don't know who to reach out to. You know, I don't know the correct people. Some people, they may just act like they have too much not free time. You know, nobody's available to speak to you. So it's kinda like a little discouraging and, you know, I do wish that it was something more available for us to actually speak to people that can help us get those resources a little bit quicker and more easier.
Man, they give you money for stuff you shouldn't see.
I'd like to say something to that point, um, because I did look, I did look here. Um, there is, um, this organization called Catapult, and it's, it's similar, it's vaguely, um, familiar to some people and, and some people know it a lot, and others don't know about it at all. Because it is, um, new and, um, it's not very, uh, large right now as far as this network, it's building this network. Um, I stumbled upon Catapult before it was even as big as it is, um, now. And it's a coworking space, a networking, um, space, um, and kitchen incubator. That's right now where our headquarters is located. Um, I stumbled on them when I was looking for a kitchen because I found out in the, the process of trying to start a, a food business that, oh, you have to be licensed, but you can't get your license without a actual brick and mortar kitchen, um, that has a licensed kitchen, um, in order for you to be licensed. So I found this out just by happened to be Googling, you know, commissary kitchens or how do I get a food license? Um, I called DBPR, which is the Department of Business and Professional Regulation, which holds a lot of licenses, um, for a lot of different things. But you don't necessarily know that food is one of them. I thought Department of Health and Department of Agriculture were only food licensing agencies. And that's a lot of things that people miss, um, are miscommunicated about. And you have to find these things out as you call. And I called Department of Health, uh, Department of Business and Professional, Department of Ag, and they all don't say the same thing. None of them know, oh, well, you have to go over here for that. Or grocery stores are, are licensed by Department of Ag. Um, caterers are licensed by DBPR. You don't know this stuff until you start researching. And, um, when that kitchen space didn't end up happening, then I Googled some more and Catapult came up. Catapult had had a, a licensed kitchen, but it was under Department of Agriculture. So once I came, I was their first need that needed a licensed kitchen for a caterer under DBPR. That was a whole learning experience. Catapult and I learned together how they needed to be licensed for me in order for me to be licensed as a caterer. And it's such a, a moving train with so many different parts and stops, and you're, you're constantly learning. And you don't know where to go to first versus second versus third. And I was saying before the camera is on, I wish, um, and I'm probably getting ahead of you a little bit, but I wish that one of the chief assistants or helps would be to, when you look to start a business, you can go to SunBiz all you want, sunbiz.org, where you know to start a fictitious name and you know to, perhaps you may know to incorporate yourself. But there's nowhere on SunBiz, and I've been on it plenty of times. I've been to Department of Revenue and the IRS and all of these different governing agencies that maintain you in business. And when you go to SunBiz and you start your fictitious name, it would be helpful to say, you know what, your next stop should be. Once now you've created a name for yourself. Now the next stop should be to incorporate yourself. Here are the different incorporation entities. Here's why you should incorporate yourself as this, as this, as this. Uh, because there's many questions, but there's always halfway answers. There's never a full answer to explain how and in context, why you need to go to the, the next thing. Um, it would be helpful, once you get incorporated, you, your next stop should be, um, applying for an electronic funds transfer in order to pay your sales tax, once you start selling your product. Your next stop should be the IRS. You need to file your taxes. You have to know this stuff. And there's such a high percentage rate of failed businesses, and I think that that is one of the main reasons. And the main reason is because people don't know what they don't know until they stumble upon it. Or you've gone six months now, you've been selling product, and you haven't been charging tax. You haven't been paying tax, but you're getting all of these things in the mail that say, you owe taxes, let's help you pay taxes. But those are actually third-party companies that are telling you, we need to help you pay your taxes, but you didn't even know you owed taxes to begin with. So those are the types of things that make you fail because by the time you find out, you've gotta renew your license. You've gotta pay sales tax. You've gotta pay county tax, city tax. You've got to, um, get insurance to cover yourselves.
Now you're overwhelmed.
Now you have money, but you're not making money yet. You have money to pay, but you don't have money that you've made. So those are the types of things that business owners, new business owners, need. And that's the type of disconnect that is so common across the board, and people don't know how to stay in business.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Yeah, because you just say way to my, to my next, my next question or my next conversation topic is knowing proper business structure. Because again, a lot of us do fail. A lot of us, a lot of us do fail because we don't know, as, as Ms. Crumbly said, we don't know these, the basic step-by-steps, you know? We, again, it's nice to have, um, a business of your own. But again, when it comes down to you're bringing in fifty-three hundred dollars that week and then you have to pay the, the, and then it's the end of the month, seven thousand for this and this out, out in expenses, you haven't made anything, you know? And so a lot of us, especially starting with the millennials, we jump out here in business, but we do not know the proper business structure. So I think it'd be highly imperative, that's why I said, get proper mentorship, you know? And that's also something the city, um, can help out and do and really just make it readily available and in our face because I'm, we're not stating that it's not here. We, a lot of just don't know about it. And we can make an argument and say, well, it's here, but the people don't know about it. Well, is it benefiting the people? You follow what I'm saying? So, so that, that's something that, um, that can definitely, uh, be addressed. But while we're on it, I wanna talk about the difference between brick and mortar and home-based businesses. And for all those who don't know what brick and mortar is, it's the actual door that you go pull on, like if you walk up to Walmart or at the tire place. Like tonight, we're in a brick and mortar. Mr. Moy has a brick and mortar, right? And so we wanna discuss between the home base and then the brick and mortar. So if you wanna, whoever wants to jump in on that.
Great.
I guess I can start.
Like someone, and you know what? Good, because you were a home base and then you have a, so yeah, tell us about that.
Yeah, you know, the difference is, I mean, you're just pretty much dishing out way more money. Um, when I was, that's, that's a very different. But when I was taking pictures in my apartment, um, I didn't have to pay double the electricity. I didn't have to pay double the rent. I didn't have to pay double just everything. So basically, I mean, that's really the difference. You just have to pay double everything, and you have to be prepared for it or else everything will go down, so.
But what are the, do you see any benefits though from having your own space? I mean, the privacy and like you don't see like?
So the benefit is definitely the clientele will change tremendously. People are willing to actually pay more money for the services you're willing to offer. You could be the best at what you're doing, but if you don't have, I guess you could say that brick and mortar, then people really aren't willing to invest in you because that's what everyone is doing. They're pretty much investing in you. So for me, I've just been able to have more of a professional setting to bring more different clients to me, so, and help out my business a lot.
So, so, I mean, yes, it's double the money, but- So so, I mean, yes, it's double the money, but it also weighs itself out. Again, more clients come to you now, other types of clients come to you, you re- reach out to a broader span, shall I say. Okay, home base.
I've always been home based. For me, home bases, I run, I run my company.
Tell us about that.
Oh, wow.
So our meetings are virtual. You know, he flies in, we have events, but I learned from him, you don't have to be face to face to actually have those meetings. Um, that is important, because you can talk with the way technology is now. And I've always wanted, my whole dream was like, I wanted to have an office. And then I realized for what I do, it's just a waste of money. Because why do I need an office when I can get deals done? Through any other way, you know, you can meet at Pandora, you can meet somewhere that, you know, for what I do. You know what I'm saying, like I, I'm not a stationary person, because I host events. So having an office is just something, just say, hey, I have an office. But I had to learn that, I had to learn that it wasn't important for me.
Gotcha. I feel the same, like I feel like, um, a lot of, a lot of times, um, you can pretty much work from anywhere. For me, I think the only reason why I would want an office is because I have small children at home. And my clients, you know, they invest, you know, a premium rate and so you don't wanna like be on a Zoom call with them. And then you got kids running behind you, so for me, that would be the only reason why I would get in office. Is so that when I am on my calls with my clients, I can have, you know, they can have my undivided attention. But for the most part, like, everything can be done from home, it's more beneficial, because, you know, I have a home office set up. And so the home office space is a tax write off, you know, you can write off a certain percentage and, you know, your internet and all of those things. So, um, for somebody like me, it's more beneficial for me to do my work at home than for me to have an actual, you know, establishment.
For me, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. I have three locations, my home and then I also do a lot of work at my church. And then I'm at Catapult, um, is my main, um, hub and we conduct our tastings there, that's where our kitchen is. Um, so that is essentially a brick and mortar that, um, you know, we would be looking for a more permanent space. Uh, which I'm I'm currently looking for more permanent space. But that is a place where a lot of new businesses and fledgling concepts can come and start. Um, and that's a a brick and mortar that if you're a home based business, you can actually work from there, work there. And it's a smaller cost or fee to your overhead, um, and it's essentially home away from home. And that's where I I started and that's where I'm at right now. Um, but a brick and mortar for me is necessary because of the type of business I have. Uh, but I don't have to have an office to be conducting, um, business there. I do have to have a kitchen, um, with a new maybe an office to the side, but I can do everything from my computer and my phone just as well.
Gotcha, awesome, well, that that that's it right there. Now, we, we're not gonna den- deny the fact that, you know, we're minorities, right? Um, in in the sense, right? And so what I wanna talk about is being a minority business owner. What are some of the things and the resources that we, that you all use to help you get to this point? Because there are a lot of people out there watching, um, black, black and brown particularly, and they are wanting to know, well, you know. I see my challenges, right? I know what I'm faced with and we know what the country is, what what's going on in the country right now. And, you know, they're like, you know, well, how did you all get there, you know, we always wanna know the how before the why, which is backwards. But as minority business owners, what resources did you all use? And I'm pretty, you all threw that out there, some of it, but what some of the resources that you all use to get your businesses to the point where they are today? Um, if you don't mind sharing, then feel free to share some of the challenges that you face, but you don't have to share that. But just give us some, give us some tips on, how did you get where you are today, what resources did you use as a?
I think we can all agree and say social media, definitely. Um, it's a blessing and a curse, if you don't use it right. But, um, it's definitely something that can help you out a lot if you use it correctly. But that's the thing, you have to know how to use it correctly and not use it for evil like a lot of people do, so.
I think for me, like, my problem has never been investing, like, I've always, since I started. When I started doing makeup, I wanted a makeup coach, I wanted lessons, I wanted to learn how to be good, you know. So I've always been one to like, if if Titus has something that I feel like he can teach me. And he says, I got this coaching program, you know, I just learn, uh, you know, I have this successful business, blah, blah, blah. Like, I've always been the type of person to invest in coaching, because I believe that coaching is a cheat code. Like, I believe, why should I have to, you know, even when my son was playing basketball, like, I got Cory, like, hey, coach, can you? Can you work with my son, like, I've just always been that type of person, my issue was applying it, though, my issue was like, I would learn and not apply. Um, but I've also, the things that I've learned from coaching, I've been able to take, like. In just conversations and relationship, like you said, like, I worked with somebody who was, like, he had a lot of businesses. He was very wise and so he told me about things like, go to your city, the Small Business Association. And they have all this money and they have these things, so just talking to people and having conversations with people and asking questions. Like, I'm a question person and so I've asked questions and that's how I've been able to, you know, learn more. And get more information, because I wasn't afraid to ask.
I wanna say, the failure for me, um, was early on, was chasing money. And I think that's where, um, a lot of us go wrong, we think about how much money we can make. And we don't think about budgeting, we don't think about planning properly and what we can do to break these. I think that's so more important than how much money we can make. And also, the, um, just understanding that when you're starting a business, they want you to fail for first two years. And a lot of us don't know that, know that, and we jump into a business and we say, hey, I got, uh, SunBiz, I got LLC. And then they don't understand that you're supposed to, you're supposed to fail. Three years, you're supposed to fail, alright, and but the planning of starting a business is, you have to maintain for that year to fail. So you gotta put yourself in a position to fail. So most of us just chase the bag. And that's what I was doing, young, everything was about chasing the money, not understanding the organization parts of things. Protecting your brand, making sure that your people are safe, um, at your events. Hiring the right people to secure that what you're doing is the right thing. Um, so I I had, I had, I had to learn, I had to learn that part and, um. That's, that's kind of what I wanna speak on, just the the bad side of it, we think money first, instead of actually building that, building what is gonna last for. Ten or fifteen years down the road.
And I think that's the thing with the, um, with the the millennials. Like, I feel like, like you said, when you were young, like, when I was, when I was young. Me and Cory about the same age, when I, when he started his business, it wasn't people like really out there doing business. You know what I'm saying? And so what I think happened with the, with the young, with the newer generation is the expectation. Like, you guys will go from high school to business, you know what I'm saying? And there's no, there's no in between and so there's a lot of holes, there's a lot of things that's not learned. Um, because all we see is fast, 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 all we see is social media. So all we see is people looking like they doing well, they might have fake money in their videos and looking like they ballin', you know what I'm saying? But no, I'm just saying, we, we don't, right, and so we, we, we look at the, a lot of people look at social media. And then when things don't work out the way, like, if I've been in business, like Cory said, for a year. Like, my business, I've been in business since two thousand thirteen and I just found my thing. Like, I'll be honest enough to say that, like, I'm, I've just found my thing, like, this year. And so we have to be able to give ourselves the opportunity to fail, but I think that social media has made it so unreal. Like, it just seemed like I should start a business today, not go to school, not get no kind of training. Or, you know, invest in whatever my skill is, learn customer service, I should just start a business. And then I should automatically start making money, not impact, but money.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other part of where we fail at, because then we expect like, you gotta support me. But you don't have the proper plan, so like, e- even when, um, Tyson was saying the thing about, um, Lakeland is very supportive. You have a lot of people that would say, it's a small town with a bunch of crabs in the bucket, that's not the case. It's what you're presenting to people that makes it not worthy. You know what I'm saying, so like, just because you start a business and I'm starting and I have a business that's successful. What you're starting, you don't even have an identity of what you're doing, you're just seeing what I'm doing. So with that, it's like, okay, you're counting my money, you're not looking at what I've done behind the scene to be successful, how I feel. Like she said, it might be s- seven, eight years before I find out what I wanna do, I can attest to that, but a lot of people won't understand. Um, when I first jumped into the promotion, I wasn't having events for adults, I was doing everything for the kids. It was teens, I was doing the step shows, the talent shows every year, the teen parties at the football games. So now, those teens are what? So for me, I built a clientele that trusted in what I do, they've been with me since they were young. And then, um, I think the the hardest thing for me was making that transition. And then understanding the bad side of what comes with that transition. For like, for me, when I was doing teen events, I never had anything bad, people didn't talk bad about that. Soon as I started doing adult, adult events and having grown both parties, oh, I got so many enemies now. Because they thought about, it was something they always wanted to do, so when I became successful and then they don't get the support, boom. I'm the one to blame. Oh, well, don't support me, cause I'm not from here. But they don't understand that, the studying part of it, like, I actually had someone who for, when I jumped into the game, he mentored me. And I learned from him, I asked questions, I learned, you know what I'm saying, he coached me, he taught me the good and the bad. And I watched him fail and I learned from that, like, okay, I saw what he did wrong, I'm not gonna do it. You know what I'm saying, and then for, like, I don't know, like, a lot of us doing our own thing, but I have a business partner. You know, and I think for me, it's a plus, like she asked earlier, what makes your engine run? Because it seems like it's multiple people, I'm strong at something and he's strong at something and we balance that out.
Balance is key, yes.
Yeah, I wanna piggyback off of what Cory said, you know, um, I have a business partner too with this studio, um, which is the makeup artist, Ashley. And it's just us working together is so much better than me working by myself. Before I got the studio, I had been doing photography solely by myself, so for that, it was easy. But for something like this, the brick and mortar, you need that team to actually make it go a little bit further. I couldn't do this by myself and that's just honestly speaking, it's just, you need that dedication from somebody else to help you go further. You need someone else to help you, just kind of push you a little bit further when you're doubting yourself. So I definitely think having a business partner is something that helps out a lot.
Corporation, like I, I, you know, even just saying, oh, Four Life Promotions LLC, and it was just me, I was still hustling. And I had, when I got my business partner, it taught me, he taught me the things that I, you know what I'm saying, like, yo, you shouldn't be doing this. They should, you should know your value, let me help you understand what your value is. And then we took it from hustling to a real legit corporation.
I, I can't speak from a business partner. Vantage point, but I can attest to similarly to what you were saying, Titus. Uh, regarding people who are there to support you and you all have said that. When you don't have any money to pay people, there's those people who start with you and they steal with you. I have a whole network of people that, um, mainly came out of my church relationships. Um, out of growing up, I'm, my, my dad started in church and it was started a year after I was born. So my entire network of of some of the most supportive people came out of church. And and supported me when I wasn't a a business person, when I wasn't, you know, doing anything. I was making a name for myself then, um, and they were available. And they were like, hey, if you need help, I'll help you, they weren't looking for money, they weren't looking for me to be successful first and then they jump on the bandwagon. And those are the people that help you stay alive, because you can't afford to pay people when you're just starting out. And just finding out that you owe money, you know. It's, it's so many, so many things and, and and the mentoring is key. I mean, and finding, going and finding that coach and and partnering with people who know more than you. And only hanging with people who are above you in that next level, because that's where you're going. You don't hang with the the same people who have the same level of knowledge. You can't learn, you can learn from every situation, you can learn from people who are on your same level. But you want to look for people who are going past you, who've already made it past you, um, and where you're going. And those people I've also brought with me. Um, I have a very different, um, breakout and concept of a catering events business. Because of the way I started it and I didn't wanna be the same as every other catering company that already exists. Um, it's a, it's a model that's very common and it's the same across the board, um, you know what to expect. But if you want a personalized experience that starts with service to the customer, where the customer is key. The customer, the person depends on you and they know you, you know, you're there for them. Um, as if they're the only one in the room and that is the quality that sells your product. It's not the product, I'm not selling food, I'm selling an experience, I'm selling food, um, I'm selling an experience. And a personalized experience that a person can appreciate and remember. Um, and that is what the network is all about. The network that came with me that I started or that I pulled from were old friends. And people who were, you know, older than me or or I'm friends with their kids and and they're helping me now. And a lot of people are complaining now about staffing and things of that nature. I have different demographics, I have different generations, generations who are older, who've been working, they have gobs of experience. And they might not be working anymore, but they have time for me, they have time to serve people and they have a servant, servant mentality. Um, I have young people who wanna work, who may be out of college or they're in college and on break. You have high school students, those are the the people that can make or break you as well. And if you're, if you're serving them and you're also serving with them and they're learning from you and you're learning from them, what are they looking for? Um, what are older people looking for, our elders can teach us so much, because they have a work ethic like no other. And, you know, you can find yourselves complaining about the young groups and how they don't wanna work, they even want the money fast. But there's lessons in that as well and they might be ready to go for it, you know, they got the muscle, they can carry things. But your older ones, you don't have to, you can depend on them, they're, they've got the experience, they've got the reasoning skills, um, they can see forward. A little bit more, so it's a, it's a learning process and it's so many things you can learn from different people. And from finding the answers and from looking for coaches.
Can I just say something off of that really quick? I wanna say, um, another thing with, um, how we may have failed at first is. You know, we don't really listen to other people at first. And one thing I wanna say is even around, it wasn't maybe even last year, um, I was on the phone with Camilla. And she just randomly just gave me some advice that I really needed to hear. And a lot of people don't realize, like, you need those people around you that actually care about you and wanna see you do better. And, you know, it could be a friend, it could be a mentor, Camilla just happens to be both, so it just worked out perfect. But you definitely have to have a listening ear to other people and just understand that those people that actually do wanna help you, they're gonna give you that advice. And you have to listen to it no matter what.
Even the people that you work with, you might take my picture and I might give you an idea to brainstorm, you can use it somebody else. Take that, like, okay, I I like that idea. I might, I might try that.
And not all, criticism is bad, right? You need criticism, you need people to disagree with you, you need people to say, that needs some work. You need people to say that and it's okay and it should, don't let it make you feel less than. Let it make you grow, let it make you add to it, well, what it, what do you not like about it? What is it, find out more of why they don't like, don't just stop at the the criticism, find out why they feel that way and it it always helps.
I could definitely say, when I first started, seven years ago, I did not have the mindset to take criticism at all, like I was. Like, I was very immature, I thought I was mature, but, you know, I was very immature. And now, being at twenty-eight, when people tell me things, I listen with ease and I don't talk back. I sit down and I say, you know what? They must be right about something because other people can see where you're failing at and you can't see when you're actually doing it. It's hard to see where you're failing from the inside, but other people, when they look at you and they do wanna see you do better, they can see where you can improve at. And it's really up to you if you're gonna listen to it, I mean, if you wanna keep failing, I say, don't listen to it. But take all criticism, criticism as something that you can kinda learn from and gain from.
And don't be afraid to make mistakes, like, don't be afraid to not know it all, it's okay, like, ask questions. Like, I don't know this, I don't know how to do this, help me, can, do you know anybody who knows how to do this?
So just to wrap it up, uh, on this last question. So we, we, we've talked about from structure to, um, our own personal experiences. So I wanna end it, end it on this one. How can we bridge the gap between that misinformation? And how can we, uh, what are some more tips that you can add on tonight? Of how can we help small businesses, um, just as a community? How can we help each other as small business owners?
I think the first thing we can do is not be afraid to share, like, I'm a sharer, right? And so if I, if I find something and like, Titus, look, you need to do this, like, this will help you. Like, I think that, like, it's resources and there are things out there, but if we're not a part of the circle. Like Dee was able to find out of, like, she said, she stumbled across it, but she found out about Catapult and it helped her business a lot. Well, there's business owners that probably need that but don't know. And so I think that we need to be more open to share when we do find resources, the money that's out there for brick and mortar businesses. You know, hey, contact this person, they can help you out. Or just whatever it is, like, when we get a win, like, don't just keep it to yourself. Cause you're worried about the next person getting the same thing, like, we different. So we should all want, you know, we should wanna win as a community. Like, if, if Titus wins, I win, if Dee wins, I win. When Cory, if Cory wins, I win, like, we are all one. And I think that if we can get that mentality, share the information, instead of trying to hoard it and keep it to ourselves, then that would help.
Cause you weren't got me to do the, the prom, I was gonna do. Interest in doing, she hit me saying, you, you would be the perfect person for it. That's crazy, I just, when you said that, she called you, like, wow. What was the question again? I wanna answer.
Um, so, yes, sure, I'll, I'll give it to you. Um, how can we bridge the gap of misinformation or not being included? And how can we help someone, help small businesses? So what advice can we give to small business owners to help them grow?
Network, I, I just, I mean, that, that, that's such a key. Like, we have to be willing to network with each other, then you can share the ideas. Um, you can meet people that, um, have some type of vision that you have. But I think, like, for small businesses around Polk County, I don't wanna just say Lakeland. I think we're afraid that you're gonna get, you're gonna be better than me. And that's, that's where we lose, that's where we lose at. And, um, also, um, outside of networking, just being able to have that trust. Have that trust that what information you're giving me is something that I can use. But I'm not just, the networking, we're, we're so against that. We say we are, but we're so against that. And, um, like I was telling Titus earlier, um, I met a few of my friends and we just hung out and we just talked. And she, she said she does it, we just said she does it and you just talk and you start learning things. I think today was like, uh, educational for all of us because I'm learning. Just hearing, like, yeah, you talk about those different things you talked about, we learn. We just need more of that in, in the small business world, um, compared to us looking at each other as competition. Like, everybody, every, everybody that's in the same business as you is not competition, because Titus might be booked up.
Thank you.
He might be so booked that he might need to tell someone that, hey, I have this other guy or y'all lady that's just as good. We're missing that, we're, we're missing that part of the networking, like, to be willing to share, like, okay, this client, you can go there. That's just, that don't happen.
I could piggyback off of what Cory said because that is actually how I run my business. Um, we've gotten to the point where our volume has gotten too, too much. And I've been constantly building relationships, it goes back to relationships. And so I know now who I would refer to, um, to maybe take this, uh, take on this job. Uh, we build a, a vendor network that we use, um, people who we've used, um, we've tested. And, and tried and they have excellent reputations, um, but we share the work, we share the labor. Uh, and people now look to us as a referral agency. They look to us as a, a name that can refer good quality business to them. Um, because we're not trying to hog up all the services, we're not trying to hog up all the, I'm not the only caterer. I also refer to other caterers, I say, hey, you know, so-and-so down the street does this very well and we're not able to do it right now. Let me talk to them and I'll talk to that caterer, I'll let them know. I've got a client over here, um, extending that olive branch because it's worth everything. Um, and then that person will say, hey, so-and-so might tell you, you know, and it just shares, we all help each other. And your name also goes around when you do that, you're not losing customers, you're gaining customers because you're sharing customers. And it just keeps going, it's a snowball effect. And it's worth everything to, to be open, um, there's plenty of customers to go around for everybody. There was ten of the same businesses in the same room, there's still enough customers for all of us to get all of them. It, it's just, it's not, it's not a problem.
Cause how many people live in Lakeland?
There's no reason to have a crab mentality or a mindset that if I tell you where I'm bumped or where I failed. Or how I got here, or why I needed to call an accountant or a bookkeeper and what my line items should be. I don't have to give you amounts, I don't have to give you my, my down, my bottom line or my revenue for last year. I can give you how I got to there, I can give you the, I can give you an empty template, but that helps. Templates, not inventing the wheel over again, and I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, especially when somebody's always done it, you know, before you. So it, it's worth everything to share, share what you know.
Any last parting words before I close us out?
Yes, um, I just wanna say, you know, to go off of the question. Um, a lot of people don't put their mental health first and I feel like with business owners, that's the one thing that people should know at first. Is always put your mental health before anything else, don't be afraid to say no. And you just have to realize that you can work hard without overworking yourself at all times, so. You know, I had to learn that the hard way probably two years ago. So it's like, you know, just try to stay focused, put your mental health first and don't work too hard.
I think, I think it's important to be patient and run your business for you than not for social media. Because that's kinda been, the, the, uh, the cycle that I've been seeing. Everybody wants to put on for social media, just to say they have a business. And it's, it's more of you focusing on getting likes instead of trying to learn how to, how to be successful, you know what I'm saying? So just pa- and be, just be patient, like, it's not gonna happen in one day. And if you're starting a business, have enough financial backing that you can last that year. So when you fail, you file for taxes, you get your money back. People just don't get their part of it, like, you know, they lose money and they look to blame, that's the other thing, we gotta blame you, we gotta kill the blame game, alright? Everybody's not calling Facebook on you, everybody's not calling the health department on you, everybody's not calling people on you. You're calling on yourself because you're focusing on putting on for the people instead of your business, you know? So, um, that, that's key, but if you're gonna start a business, have a plan where financially you can last a year. You can last them days, file them taxes to get that money back, to write it back again, fail, write it back again, fail. And then you should, by that time in three years, you should know whether you're gonna be successful in this business or, or move on. But at least you guys, you're gonna get your money back.
That's the closing note.
So you gotta be legit, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, it's too much money, no, it's worth the paper, every time.
Ladies and gentlemen, there you have it. Uh, we have had a great conversation for over an hour discussing the ins and outs of business. And so if you're out there and you're looking to start that business, I hope we were able to help you on tonight. Um, and even if you are in business, I trust that we gave you some valuable information. Ladies and gentlemen, all it takes is to listen. A leader that listens will always go far, listen, don't be afraid to ask, ladies and gentlemen. Again, I was, I am your host, Allison Lewis, better known as Al Lewis. I am running to be your next Lakeland City Commissioner, please vote Tuesday, November second. Thank you so much, God bless, bye-bye.